Good evening, and welcome to the Foxborough zoning Board of Appeals April 20, 2023 meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Foxborough Cable Access. So we have some general business items. The minutes from March 9, March 16, and April 4. Any questions or revisions or comments?
Diane, I had sent you one very small.
Right. Everybody was okay with March 9. I got edits from March 16 from both Barney and you, and I spelled Lorraine's name wrong, sorry. And then I cut and pasted through the entire thing on April 4. So one would be as submitted and the other two as amended.
So Diana has now spelled your name wrong once and Lorraine's once.
Usually my name gets spelled wrong.
Kurt and I are next.
Who is next?
Want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from March 9, March 16, and April 4 of this year.
Second.
Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine? I know she said yes, but.
Yep.
And Barney, yes. Diana asked us to let her know what our summer schedules are, respective summer schedules are. I know you're gone in July.
I'm gone, yes.
And you're gone.
I'm going at the end of May.
Okay. But that's after our meeting. You're going to be?
Yeah, I'll be for the meeting, yep.
Okay.
I'm gone in July.
So I actually, I somehow missed the question, so I apologize.
So you're gone in May and July?
I'm gone for the May and July, but let me go back and take a look at my schedule. I apologize. I did not look that over.
Yeah, I'll be away the week of the June meeting. But I think we have Metro Thursday in June. Need to.
Yeah, we do.
We need to reschedule. And Lorraine, are you aware of what your summer vacation schedules are? She's still muted. Now we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I'm out the second to last week of June.
Second to last week of, second and last week?
Yeah.
No, second to last week of June.
Okay.
I get the date.
That would be the 22nd if we do the Thursday.
Yeah, okay. And I'm usually gone that week that we have the, you know, the meeting. So we'll work around stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything in yet for May, Diana?
The Gillette people for the sign have been emailing me a lot, so they're going to be applying before next week.
Okay. How about the wireless communication?
I talked to Ted Fire on that. That's still in the works, but it is going to be going through. He's not sure what time or when it would be, but I just gave Diana a heads up that she should be expecting that soon.
Okay, so it's possible we'll have that.
It's possible it could be coming the same time, but they're still working out the quirks in it, so.
Okay.
But it is gonna, I was assured that it is gonna happen.
Okay. So we will have things in May then? Okay. All right, the time being 6:35 PM. We have the continued public hearing of American Outdoor Advertising, which is requesting a special sign permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 213 Signs, Section 213, 3C, 1A, and 213, 5A, 1 Table 1 permitted signs for Sign District 2, and Section 213, 6B, 2C, to allow the construction of a two-sided electronic billboard at One Springbrook Road, which is Assessors Map 94, Parcel 19, in Sign District 2. Mr. Burr.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Robert Burr. I represent American Outdoor Advertising 3 LLC and Daniel and Claudine Rounds. I'm here this evening with Mr. Stephen Ross behind me, who's a managing member of the corporate entity, and Daniel and Claudine Rounds in the back of the room, residents of 204 Green Street, Foxborough, and also the owners of the commercial property known as One Springbrook Road in Foxborough. To my right is Mr. William Buckley, Bay Colony Engineering, who's done the site plan for this project. American Outdoor Advertising has entered into a 20-year lease with the Rounds at the subject property, again, One Springbrook Road. We are here this evening seeking the special sign permit, as you described, Mr. Chairman. At the special town meeting held January 30, 2023, the town of Foxborough amended Section 213, 5.8.1, the Table 1, that essentially allows consideration of billboards in Sign District 2, subject to the issuance of a special sign permit, as long as it meets the further regulations described in Section 213.6.2C, specific to the I-95 area, which I'll get into in greater detail. Foxborough Select Board has negotiated and executed a mitigation agreement. By the way, I should have said I've included a memorandum on the formal petition here. I'm just highlighting some of the highlights here. Again, American Outdoor Advertising has negotiated with Foxborough a mitigation agreement that provides for, among other things, $50,000, up to $50,000 per year in annual grant, $25,000 per year per digital face, an opportunity for an additional 5% of royalty payments to the town of Foxborough on any and all gross annual revenue collected in excess of $500,000, six hours of free advertising per digital face side for a total of 12 hours per month for the town to advertise community-related events and other nonprofit government advertising, an annual payment bond to assure that the grant payments due to the town are in fact paid by a surety if the entity does not pay them, and then finally, of course, town oversight of the content of the billboard advertising. I've attached that this evening as Exhibit A, the fully executed mitigation agreement with Foxborough. The $50,000, Mr. Chairman, is an important mitigation for Foxborough, but really, the advertising time, the value added is significant and may be as much as that amount. Foxborough, through Mr. Keegan and the Select Board's office, was very interested in making sure that they got as much advertising time as possible, and that's a significant benefit to the town. American Outdoor Advertising has completed a full application pursuant to Section 213-3B and 213-3E for special sign permits. This has been advertised in the Sun Chronicle, as you stated. Mr. Chairman, the public hearing was open on March 16, continued to this evening. Petitioners now come before you, seeking a special sign permit to construct a two-sided billboard at One Springbrook Road in Foxborough. All signs in the town of Foxborough are subject to certain conditions. We do consider this to be an electronic sign, as defined under 213-2, and also as a billboard Billboards require special sign permits under 213-3.C.2, subsections A through I. The first requirement, there are following factors, fall under that section of the bylaw. First is design guidelines set out under Section 213.7. Signs shall be consolidated and limited in number. The petitioner here this evening contemplates only one pole with two electronic digital face display monitors, so there's not going to be a number of signs in this area. Subsection 2 requires a consideration of the high-quality materials. Petitioner only uses state-of-the-art fabricators and state-of-the-art electronic digital face display monitors that are consistent throughout the state, that are also energy-efficient and consistent with 700 CMR 3.07. All signs, I should have stated, require state licensure as well under this regulation. All new sign permits that greatly regulate animation, movement, colors, energy efficiency, safety concerns for motorists, et cetera. Signs shall not observe any architectural features of the, or architectural features. This sign is going to be the far corner of the lot. It should not obstruct in any way, obscure any of the architectural features of the existing Petitioner will use a state-of-the-art reinforced cement footing installed by experienced licensed excavators and installers. Subsection 4, colors and illumination of the sign shall be appropriate intensity. Again, I've stated that the petitioner will follow the rules and, oh, should follow the regulations of 700 CMR 3.07. Again, also under appropriately sized and scaled, following that same regulation. And it is not considered a multi-tenant building at One Springbrook Road. The impact on the abutting neighborhood. Proposed billboard is consistent with the purpose of the bylaws, because the bylaw permits double-faced signs now, because of the special town meeting, double-faced electronic digital billboards in Sign District 2 pursuant to Section 213-6.B.2. Proposed billboard will be at a significance from the nearest commercial butter. Under Section C, it's not near a public park. Under Section D, it's the only billboard of similarity in the area. Subsection E, it's 1,247 feet from residential use on the same side of the interstate and 555 feet away from a residential unit on the opposite side of I-95. And importantly, that section of I-95 also has a median strip of grass and trees. The current land has one commercial building and a cell tower, which Mr. Buckley will describe the size of that here in a moment. Public safety concerns, again, the, any billboard approved locally here needs to obtain a permit from the Department of Transportation Office of Outdoor Advertising, so any public safety concerns have to follow Regulation 700 CMR 3.0. Same is true for illumination, size, and height. Under Section I, factors, benefit to the town of Foxborough. Again, as I stated earlier, petitioner has executed a mitigation agreement with the town of Foxborough, as Exhibit A, provides a significant annual payment to the town, protected by an annual bond, along with the opportunity for royalties above a revenue target. Agreement also provides the town with six hours per digital face, 12 hours in the aggregate for a two-sided, two-faced billboard, and value-added free advertising. The town, through its Select Board and ZBA, will be entitled to monitor all content for Being a little bit repetitive here, subsection C of the bylaw requires an executed mitigation agreement under 213-3E10. Again, as I've stated, that has been executed. This board recently also for billboards requires a bond for removal. In a conversation I had with the chair, it's been suggested $20,000. Petitioner certainly intends to acquire a bond in that amount, or in a higher amount if the numbers have changed since that period of time, but certainly a bond to be able to, I'm sure that the town has funds to be able to remove a sign that would be considered to be abandoned. Under subsection 213-3J, no sign may be transferred or assigned. Petitioner has no intentions on assigning them, but if the commercial opportunity presented itself and it was in the best interest of all the interested parties, we would come back under that bylaw to seek assignment. Under Section 2 of my brief, again, as I've stated, the special town meeting, January 30, 2023, among other things, Section 213-5-A, subsection 1, Table 1, was amended to allow for billboards in Sign District 2 by issuance of a special sign permit pursuant to Section 213-6.B., subsection 2. And under that, as in my brief, the board must be within a lot area that's not more than 250 feet from Interstate I-95. Again, I have the talented Mr. Buckley with me here this evening, but I do believe it's about 45 feet from the Interstate 95 layout. No billboard shall exceed 672 square feet in sign area. That's exactly what we do contemplate, and that's consistent with billboards of this type. No billboard may be placed within 1,500 feet of another billboard. There are no other billboards in the area. Such billboards must be set back at least 10 feet. This proposed billboard will be 10 feet from the lot line, on one side, actually 25 feet on the Springbrook roadside. May not be placed within 1,000 feet of a residential unit on the same side of Interstate 95 here as designed by Bay Colony. It's 1,247 feet from an existing residential unit on the same side of Interstate 95. It may not be within 500 feet of an existing residential unit on the opposite side. Here, the closest residential unit is 555 feet. May not be placed within 1,000 feet of any interchange of Interstate I-95 as measured from the nearest point of the beginning or end of pavement widening at the exit from or entrance to the main travelway of such highway. Proposed billboard is not within 1,000 feet of any interchange of Interstate 95 as measured from the nearest point of the beginning or end of the pavement widening at the exit or entrance to the main travelway to such business. At least two separate businesses. My understanding from Mr. Buckley is there are six. I listed two that were the closest, certainly D. Rounds Construction, who happens to also be the petitioner. I don't think they're precluded from being included in that list by virtue of the fact that they are the applicant. D. Rounds Construction is one business located at One Springbrook Road. Foxborough Sports Center is located at 10 East Belcher Road, within 500 feet. And further, general restrictions under subsection B in my brief, 213-5-D8. Automatic message boards and billboards shall not be animated. Petitioner does not contemplate animation, nor is animation permitted under the state regulation. There can also not be any moving content or video. Again, petitioner does not comply, no, will comply with this section, and again, it's consistent also with the state regulation as well, too. So in summary, Mr. Chairman, petitioner's subject property lies in Sign District 2. Submitted plans and other materials represent a complete application consistent with the newly adopted sign bylaw changes adopted at the special town meeting held January 30. Projects in harmony with the neighborhood because it lies in a limited industrial district that is significantly distanced to residential districts. Project expects to produce reoccurring revenue for the town and value-added significant free advertisement to the town while maintaining the town's ability to regulate the content of every advertisement. Therefore, we believe a special permit should issue at this location. Thank you. Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, again, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group. And so I would have put up here, this is a rendering that includes aerial photograph or aerial picture of the plan that you have. We gave you several drawings that show the location of the proposed billboard. So this is the smallest scale, the largest scale, actually. Shows the proposed billboard. It's located in the northerly corner of the lot. It is at the, on the intersection of East Belcher and Springbrook. It's 10 feet off of East Belcher Road, and it's 25 feet off of Springbrook Road, and that's not the post, that is the actual sign itself. So this parcel also contains a business, as Attorney Burgess said, and it also contains a monopole on it, which is right in this area here. You can just see it's kind of sideways to it. That monopole is about 122 feet wide, according to the record documents that we saw online today. This billboard is 90 feet?
90 feet.
90 feet tall at its highest point?
Pole is 90 feet, which is consistent with billboards at interstate, limited access interstate, interchanges throughout the state. And that is to overcome generally the highways, not to interject too much, but the highway runoff, most of the time, you will see that the roadway or the abutting land is lower than the actual highway.
So in this particular case, I'm just going to go to another drawing, which, again, you have all these drawings. I'm just going to put them up so that you get a better feel for them, at least from the aerial point of view. It's harder to read the text on it, but. So again, here is the parcel of land we're talking about. Here is the Rounds business. This is Springbrook Road. Here's East Belcher. Here's the sign itself. And what we've done is we've just showed you how it lays out in the neighborhood. So this is the closest residential building on the, on our side of I-95. It's about 1,247 feet, and that's at Matthew Drive. And then you look on the other side of I-95, which is here. This is the closest residential building, which is at the end of the cul-de-sac off of West Belcher Road. And again, as Attorney Burgess said, is the elevations here are about, so the elevation of the ground here on the property is about 278 feet above sea level. I-95 in the middle here, like between the house and the billboard, is about 10 feet higher. It's about elevation 285. And then West Belcher, at the end where the home is, is a little bit higher still. It's about elevation 294. And as I think I stated earlier, is the current cell tower is about 122 feet high. So it's the, if that gives you a visual of what you're seeing there, the billboard is going to be 20 feet lower than it at its approximate highest point. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
So I've got one question for you. On the location map that you provided, it does show the distance to the residential areas. Can you also, can you revise that to show the distance to the commercial activities?
Yes. And when you say commercial activities, that includes like parking areas?
Yes.
Cellar, okay.
In accordance, you know, again, if you need to know exactly what the bylaw, you know, requires as far as measurement, let me know, but.
Yep.
Kim, questions?
What is the approximate distance from the proposed billboard pole to the cell tower? Thank you.
Okay. Current questions?
Yes, you mentioned the height of the pole is 90 feet. Is that from grade to the, say, bottom of the sign, i.e. the top of the pole? Or what is the overall, I'm trying to read the, the text is very small. The overall approximate height from grade to the top of the sign?
I don't know. I've never seen that plan.
90 feet. So the top of the sign is 90 feet.
Oh, okay, so the top of the sign from grade is approximately 90 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Top of the sign, okay. I've been advised it's the top of the sign.
Good, okay.
You can keep that.
That's all I had, Barney.
Lorraine, any questions?
I don't have any questions, Barney.
Okay. Bob, the, as you probably know, we're, even though we're a board of five, although four of us are here, including on Zoom, Lorraine will be voting, I will be voting, and Kim will be voting.
Okay.
Okay. Any member of the public have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Tell us who you are, please.
Paul Morrison, South Grove Street. Now, the presentation here, it's going to be two-sided, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what's going to be on the other side? When you pass this, it's going to be bright lights. That's going to be in people's mirrors.
Going up north. That doesn't make any sense.
Do you want to explain how, or can Mr. Ross explain how these, these work?
Yeah, I wasn't quite exactly clear. If you'd like to.
Sure. So Stephen Ross, American Outdoor Advertising.
Why don't you come to him?
What is your?
I understand when you approach the sign.
Yes.
But when you pass it, it should be dark.
So, okay, so it's a V structure. So when you're heading north on I-95 and south on I-95, that's when you'll view each of the faces. You won't see any light behind it?
No, no, no. I mean, if you go by it, if it's a V, you're going to be seeing that same sign that the southbound side is seeing.
No, it's about a 30-foot spread from the back end, so you'll only see one face in one direction, in each direction.
No, you're not following me.
I, I think.
If it's, if this is the lane here, and the sign's right here.
Yes.
And you're going along, and you're saying it's going to be a V like this?
Yes.
Okay. Then people are going to be seeing the other side.
In their rearview mirror?
Yeah, it's going to be, you know.
So yes, I guess it's possible, if you look in your rearview mirror, yes, you can see that.
Okay. That's going to blind people. You've got enough light behind you with the car's headlights. This is going to, you know, accelerate it.
So I have to disagree with that. Car headlights are much brighter than the sign is. You'll see the sign as you're coming toward it, and then in your rearview mirror, yes, you'll see the other side, but it won't be as bright as the car's headlights.
So that still doesn't make, you know, make it right, you know? It's, I mean, if you've got elderly people going along, they're already blinded anyways, you know? I mean, with the lights behind them and the headlights, I mean.
Let me ask, let me, let me ask Mr. Morrison a question. There are other billboards on I-95.
The same configuration, right?
Same configuration.
Not many. There's more in Saugus. So the town of Foxborough is going to be Saugus now.
I'm not concerned about Saugus. I know that there are some in Canton, and I believe you can see, I don't know if it's in Sharon or Walpole, but, but there are billboards that you can see on I-95.
I understand that, and Route 1 as well.
Have you, driving south, say, from, you know, from 128, have you seen in your rearview mirror? Have you been blinded by the billboard in Canton?
Well, everybody's blinded by the light, isn't that right?
I'm asking you.
Yeah, it's, it's not good.
Uh-huh.
You know, here's another thing, too. Why don't you call up, postpone this hearing, why don't you call up the town of Saugus and see how much they're getting from these signs? They could be getting more money, because they do have a lot on Route 1.
The issue of mitigation is one for which the board of selectmen or their designated and spin the town manager has responsibility. That individual negotiated a contract with Mr. Burr's client. He obviously felt that the amount of money that the town was receiving and the other benefits that the town was receiving under the mitigation agreement were acceptable.
Well, he's gone now.
It is not our responsibility as a board to judge what that individual has done. If you have a problem with it, my suggestion is you speak with the town manager.
Well, the old town manager is gone. He made a deal. Now we've got a new one, who's probably a little better.
If you have a problem with what the town has received, you're welcome to speak with the town manager.
I think we discussed this before. You had a question about the billboards in the past.
Right.
And we also discussed that the zoning board has nothing to do with the revenue that's collected or the negotiations of that. It's not in our purview. So you're bringing it up again, but there's nothing that we can do about that.
Sure, you can postpone the hearing, and then you could say, let's look into it further and see what the other towns up on the North Shore are doing.
And do you, do you have any documentation to say that the town manager hasn't done that?
I don't know.
I mean, no, I'm asking you. I'm asking you.
The old town manager.
Old or new, do you have any documentation to support your claim that nobody has looked into this?
I don't think he has looked into it.
Again, do you have any documentation to support your claim?
Right now, I don't, but you know, do you want me to get some?
If you can find some documentation that states that this is not, you know, a, a deal or an arrangement that is equitable, then bring it in.
What are you going to do then? Negotiate?
You bring it into the town manager. Our responsibility, and our sole responsibility under the signed bylaw, is to determine whether a billboard complies with the requirements of the bylaw and therefore merits a special sign permit. One of the conditions that the bylaw imposes is that there must be a mitigation agreement. It's not our responsibility to determine whether the mitigation agreement is good, bad, or indifferent.
You should have that in front of you.
That is the responsibility of the town manager.
We shouldn't have it in front of us.
Responsibility is to have it in front of you. You should have all documents in front of you.
We do have it.
We have all germane documents in front of us. That is not a germane document to this discussion, and we went over this the last time you brought this up with the billboard. It's not our purview to do this.
I brought it up the last time. You should have looked into it.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else have any questions or wish to be heard? Do we have a motion to close the portion of the hearing?
I do actually have one more. I do actually have one more question for the applicant. Are there, are there any cameras or recording devices on the, the two faces, on the pole? Anything like that there are?
Yes, there's a camera on each face that monitors what's being displayed, if there's any issues, and it's, uh, it's monitored 24 hours a day.
Okay, so those cameras are just facing the board? So they're not, are they capturing what's happening on 95 or on the property?
It's a pole coming off the catwalk, just faces the board, that's it.
Okay. Just monitoring if, you know, any of the lights have gone out or that, that sort of thing?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Kim, you want to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I move that we, uh, close the public portion of the meeting.
Uh, Lorraine, will you second it?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Um, discussion. Actually, before we get into any detail, let me just say that the provisions under which this bylaw, I'm sorry, the provisions of the signed bylaw under which this application is being presented were approved at the special town meeting in January. The Attorney General's office has yet to approve the bylaw changes. Um, I spoke with the town, or contacted the town clerk today about it. He expects to receive a decision sometime in the next week or two. So obviously, if we approve this, we're going to condition it upon approval by the Attorney General's office.
That's acceptable.
I've got no reason to believe that there's any problem with what the town approved. I think it's just a factor of the, of the, of a new attorney general and changes in that office.
Right.
Okay. So let me, let me just start that, um, I, I think all of the criteria, all the requirements that the new bylaw provisions, um, impose have been satisfied or are satisfied by this application. As far as the, um, design itself, it's similar to what has been approved in the past by this board with respect to billboards on, um, on Route 1. Uh, I see no difference in there. The other thing I want to take note of is the fact that if my math is correct, about 62% of the people who voted at town meeting approved the bylaw revisions. And I think that's a significant, you know, vote to demonstrate, um, that there's a desire on the town's part to have a billboard at, at someplace along Interstate 95. So I would be inclined, with the conditions we typically impose, to, uh, to vote in favor of this.
Yes, I agree with everything that you just said. I, you know, I think the voters have spoken through the special town meeting, and then I also think that the select board, having negotiated a mitigation agreement, that also tells us what direction the town is interested in going in with respect to this. Finding this in the limited industrial district, the design itself is very familiar. Um, I would certainly like to, um, go through our, you know, standard conditions, making sure that it is lit per the state regulations, uh, no adult content, et cetera, et cetera. I know we have more conditions than that. Uh, but yes, I agree with you.
Kurt?
Uh, no, no other questions now.
Uh, Lorraine?
No, I, I agree that all the conditions have been met, Barney.
Okay, so let me, let me do this. Let me make a motion to approve the granting of the special sign permit subject to the following 12 conditions. Number one is approval by the Massachusetts Office of the Attorney General of the revisions to the signed bylaw that were approved at the town of Foxborough, January 30, 2023, special town meeting. Two, the billboard is to be constructed on a pole that shall not exceed 90 feet in height, shall be set back at least 10 feet from each lot line of the subject property. Each signed side of the billboard shall not exceed 672 square feet in area. Three, the construction and design of the billboard shall be set forth in the design plans that you provided to us, Mr. Burr, with the application. The proposed billboard shall, shall be situated in the such, subject property as set forth in the Bay Colony plot period that Bill will be revising, um, such that it shall be not less than 12,000, oh, sorry, 1,247 feet from any residential use located on the same side of Interstate 95, and not less than 555 feet from any residential use that's located on the opposite side of the highway. Four, no modification of the billboard as set forth in our decision is permitted without our prior written approval. Five, American Outdoor, in accordance with signed bylaw section 213, 3E11, shall establish a bond or other financial surety with the town of Foxborough Treasurer in the amount of $20,000 towards payment of the cost of future removal of the billboard in the event of its abandonment. And that bond is to be submitted at the time that an application is submitted with the Building Commissioner for a permit to construct the billboard. Six, the special sign permit that's granted by the board in accordance with our decision is specific to, to American Outdoor. And in accordance with signed bylaw section 213, 3J, it cannot be assigned, transferred, or conveyed to any other person or entity without the prior written authorization of the board. Seven, in the event that American Outdoor transfers ownership of the billboard to any other person or entity at any time subsequent to the issuance, issuance of the decision, the new owner of the billboard shall be required, as a condition to the operation of such sign, to obtain a special sign permit from the board and to establish a bond or other surety with the town of Foxborough Treasurer in an amount to be determined by the board in its discretion toward payment of the cost of future removal in the event of the billboard's abandonment. Eight, American Outdoor shall at all times in connection with the operation of the billboard comply with the respect, respective provisions of signed bylaw section 213, 5D8, 213, 6A2A, and 213, 6B2C, and 700 CMR 3.17, each of which provisions are incorporated in our decision by reference. Nine, in the event that the town of Foxborough Chief of Police or Building Commissioner or any public safety official of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts determines or otherwise believes that glare or lighting from the billboard impairs the vision of motorists on Interstate 95 or otherwise interferes with the safe operation of motor vehicles on the highway, then American Outdoor shall within 24 hours of notification reduce the intensity of such sign to a level acceptable to such official. Ten, advertising on the proposed billboard of adult entertainment facilities and businesses is prohibited. Eleven, American Outdoor shall obtain such permit or permits as may be required for the construction and operation of the proposed billboard from the Director of the Office of Outdoor Advertising within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation and from the town of Foxborough Building Commissioner. And twelve, American Outdoor shall implement the terms of the mitigation agreement that it is executed with the town of Foxborough, including payment of the monetary amounts as set forth therein, and the provision of up to six hours per calendar month of display time on each signed side of the billboard for public announcements that are requested by the town of Foxborough.
Anything else?
No, sounds good.
Kurt?
No.
Uh, Lorraine? Any questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, any questions?
No, thank you.
So, are you a second to the motion?
Second.
Lorraine? We're voting in motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, second to the motion.
I, I made the motion. Kim, Kim seconded, so I'm, roll call.
Okay. I said yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And me, yes. It's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I should have a decision, actually, Bill, if you can get something to us next week?
Yes.
Okay, I should have a decision written, and we should be able to sign it hopefully by the end of next week.
It's a 30-day appeal period. Okay, perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, the time being 6:40 PM. Dean Purcell seeks a special permit and/or variance from the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 Zoning, Section 4.1.1, Table 4-1, Dimensional Regulations for Uses in Residential and Neighborhood Business Districts, to allow an addition with a side yard setback of 6 feet where a setback of 15 feet is required. Properties located at Prime Byga Elm Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R15 Residential District, and it's not located in any restrictive overlay district. Yes, sir?
Yes, I am Dean Purcell. I reside at Byga Elm Street. This is Jeffrey Stats, a good friend and, uh, professor of architecture who designed, uh, the, uh, the handicap bathroom.
And how do you spell your name, sir?
Jeffrey Stats.
Jeffrey with a J?
Yep.
And?
F-F-R-E-Y.
And your last name is?
Stats, S-T-A-A-T-S.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. So let me, let me just explain. There are, there are four of us here, including.
Yep.
The young lady on Zoom. Um, Kurt will vote, I will vote, and Kim will vote.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll explain other things as we go along.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Would you like to, um?
Sure, I can give you a brief explanation of what's and the whys. Um, this is really about aging in place. Um, Dean's mother wants to move in, and eventually Dean and his wife will need probably something like this, too. It's a fully accessible, wheelchair-accessible addition on the southeast corner of the house. Uh, there's an entry door off the front porch, which makes coming and going convenient. There's a nice bay window that faces to the backyard, the trees and all of that. It's quite nice. Um, and this will allow access to the room that will be the bedroom, uh, to the rest of the house, the kitchen and the living and dining room, all on, all on one floor. So it's, as I said, it's really about aging in place.
My mother is, um, 88 years old, and she's in an assisted living facility now, um, wants to come live with, with us. And, um, so I'm, we're trying to make that possible.
According to the, um, the plan that was provided, the house currently, as I see it, with the deck is 18 from the side yard line?
It's 18 feet.
The deck projects 12 feet from the house, just like this bathroom will.
But the foundation of the house is 18 feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the deck proceed, uh, how far is the deck from the house?
12 feet out from that.
And the bathroom will be another 2 feet closer to the side yard line?
Yes.
Is that correct? Than the, uh?
It'll be equal, uh, in, uh, dimensions to at least in the extension, um, out from the house as the deck.
So it'll be in line with the deck right there. That's an existing deck that's there now?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So as far as the foundation goes, you currently have an 18-foot side yard setback, and we have a required 15, and you're proposing 6. Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
And, uh, the deck is 12 feet. The existing deck is 12 feet?
Yeah.
Just the way of the numbers. Okay.
Yeah, and the existing deck will, uh, will be the, the same 6 feet from the property line roughly, it looks like, as the addition. Yeah. Is that correct? Yes.
Oh, okay, so the deck is, is not?
The same plane as the, as the addition. That's the same plane. The projection of the bathroom will be no further than what the existing deck is. Yeah.
Scott, you agree it's a special permit?
I do.
Not a variance?
Yeah. It's not, not making, not creating a new nonconformity. It's extending the pre-existing nonconformity.
So when you applied, um, when you submitted the application, you applied for a variance. But because the deck is already within the side yard setback, you've got, you already have a nonconforming, um, structure. And because you're not extending, you're not, you're not creating a new nonconformity.
Yeah.
Um, it's still, you still, all you need is a special permit. You don't need a variance.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Which makes it a little bit easier as far as satisfying the criteria of the bylaw.
Oh, good, okay.
Kurt, any questions?
Uh, I don't, no.
Okay.
Uh, no.
Lorraine, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, does anybody in the public wish to be heard? Do you want to take a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I move to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we've got to do that roll call again. Uh, Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. This is similar to applications that we've considered, you know, numerous times. Um, you know, again, I think all the criteria, all the requirements of a special permit are satisfied. You've got an existing house. You're not adding any, um, you know, need for, um, utilities. Uh, you're not creating any parking issues. There's certainly no detriment, you know, that I can see, you know, to, to the neighborhood. You know, we do impose certain conditions, but, um, as far as I'm concerned, this is not any different than matters we've had in the past and we've, and we've approved. Kim?
Yes, I agree. Looking at, um, 10.4.2, the criteria for a special permit, I don't see that anything that you're saying, uh, you know, flies in the face of, of any of those, as Barney said.
Kurt?
No, I'm presuming that the addition will be keeping in character with the existing home materials, colors, et cetera.
Exactly, yes. Okay.
Lorraine, any comments?
Yeah, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, so let me, um, let me again make the motion with the conditions that I have. So I move to, uh, grant a special permit with the following conditions. One is that the location of the addition in relation to the existing dwelling be as shown on, on this plan, and we'll attach the plan as an exhibit to the, uh, decision. Two, that the addition is 12 feet by 12 feet in area, and it's situated no closer than 6 feet at its closest point to the southeast side yard line. And three, that the addition and the existing dwelling have exterior materials of comparable architectural type materials and color. Anything else?
No.
No.
You want to second it?
Second.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Uh, Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So hopefully, by the end of next week, we'll have a decision, uh, drafted. Um, it'll be signed. Diana will file it with the town clerk. That starts a 20-day appeal period. When that appeal period runs, you're going to need to file a decision with the Norfolk Registry of D's, and then you can deal with Mr., uh, Mr. Shitby as far as your building permit and like.
And if you complete, please provide me a copy of the, um, recorded decision at the Registry of D's with that application.
Yep.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the time being 6:45 PM. We have an appeal by Jay Cook Realty LLC pursuant to section 10.2.2.1 of the Code of Town, of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning of a zoning enforcement decision dated February 22, 2023, from the town of Foxborough Building Commissioner Zoning Enforcement Officer, stating the unlawful storage at 24 East Belcher Road is a violation of Chapter 275 zoning, Table 3-1, Table of Uses, Use 3.1.6, D4 Junkyard, comma, Order Graveyard. Properties located in the Limited Industrial District and the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. You can sit down for the evening. Let me, let me just say for the audience, um, we're not going to make a decision on this tonight, and we're not going to spend a great deal of time on it tonight for the simple reason that we need to do a sidewalk. So one of the objectives tonight will be to determine an appropriate time to effect that sidewalk, and then we'll continue the matter to, um, to a later date. that site walk and then we'll continue the matter to a later date. What I do want to do first is to have Mr. Shippey briefly explain why he issued the enforcement order and then Mr. Lovely, you can briefly contest it. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one was a little bit more complicated. I got a complaint that some trucks were in the right-of-way on East Belcher Street, so I took a ride out there and saw that there was some encroachment on the right-of-way. I reached out to Mr. Cook and I did meet with him and I talked to him and he did agree to move that out of the right-of-way. While I was there, I noticed that the yard was filled with other disabled vehicles and other vehicles that were unregistered and stuff. And I was talking to him about that and I told him, I was like, do you have all your documentation? And he assured me he had documentation saying that he could run the business that he's running. I was like, well, okay, you can supply that, but for, at least you're going to have to go for a class three license through the Board of Selectmen, which is to hold a junkyard license. So he ended up filing that class three and it got remanded back to me to do a zoning determination on it. After looking in the file, I found that this was in violation since 2009. I went back into our files and I saw there was a site plan approval that was done in 1990, that the side lot, the adjacent lot was only allowed to have loam and soil only and gravel, it's like a gravel pit only, and nothing has been amended to it except for the addition of loam in 1991, I do believe. So I wrote a memo to the Board of Selectmen that this is not conducive with the, in accordance to our bylaw as a junkyard and I had to cite here Mr. Cook in violation of that bylaw. And here we are.
Any questions for Mr. Shippey at this point?
No.
Jeff?
Jeff. Lovely? Thank you, my name is Jeff Lovely, I represent Jay Cook Realty LLC, which is the owner of this parcel of land at 24 East Belcher Road in Foxborough. And with me tonight is Jeff Cook, who is a principal of that LLC. As noted, this is an appeal of Mr. Shippey's letter dated February 22, 2023. There's a little confusion about this because Mr. Shippey opines that the property is some sort of a junkyard, an auto graveyard, and that those uses are not permitted under our zoning bylaws. We concede that those uses are not permitted under our zoning bylaws, which I actually pointed out to then-town manager Bill Keegan when he invited Mr. Cook to apply for those auto licenses, which Mr. Cook ultimately did and then withdrew pending resolution of this issue. We do deny that the definitions in the bylaw are very vague and that we, my clients use this property, they do not use it as a junkyard or auto graveyard. If you look at the definition of junk and junkyards, which I believe there's an effort to try to change them and tie them in with auto graveyards at the next town meeting, it's extremely vague, extremely broad, and could apply to almost anything and to many properties in town. It's a little bit of a slippery slope. The historical use of this particular property, if you can visualize the property along the left side of East Belcher Road, to the right part of this property is a large commercial building which was built in 1960, I believe, has always been used for various uses that are either pre-existing, nonconforming, or allowed in the district. Auto repair, truck repair, truck storage, contractor yard, and things like that. This is where Mr. Cook operates his commercial equipment moving and truck towing businesses. He has multiple large trucks, Mack trucks, that kind of thing, and large trailers. When you need something excavated on your property, the excavator is almost certainly transported there by Mr. Cook's equipment, as many contractors do not have their own low-bed trailers. There's a separate tenant who repairs automobiles and trucks and Mr. Cook repairs large trucks, pieces of equipment, and things like that on the site. When he repairs trucks, he replaces their tires, at times he dismounts and remounts large truck bodies, components of trailers, dump beds and things like that. And that is there for use, so some of that is there for use in his auto repair business as well as for the maintenance of his own trucks. To the left of the site where the building is, is another site which has historically, as far as we can tell, been used by different contractors. It was at the time Mr. Cook purchased it in about 2008, the site of a loom business, so it had on it or could have on it crushers, equipment, excavators, trucks. I believe the site plan permit said that you can't park more than five trucks on the property at the time. Admittedly, that use has changed and we admit that we do not have any site plan permit for that and we will obtain one or apply for one once we have worked through this process. You know, Mr. Shippey's letter includes a claim that the property is in violation of the Water Resource Protection District, but this use has been in place since before the Water Resource Protection District was enacted. I think it was enacted in 1995. This has been used for many of the current uses since 1960. I believe that at one point Mr. Shippey had either stated to my client or agreed with my client that the property had some pre-existing, nonconforming status. That's not referenced in the letter at all. One of the concerns with the letter is we disagree with the substance, although as I'll get into it a little bit, we think it's imperative that we work with the board and with Mr. Shippey to get things back on track. But if you read the enforcement order as written, it would require that all of the uses on the property conforming and nonconforming and allegedly in violation would have to shut down, remove all trailers, all construction equipment, et cetera, from the property. So it's inoperable vehicles, many of the vehicles are there for repair because they're inoperable. So it would effectively, if enforced to its language, shut down the tenant who runs an auto repair business, shut down Mr. Cook's business, he couldn't keep trailers or construction equipment or his trucks on-site. Now, having said that, I would concede that the property and its uses can be improved and we are not unwilling to work with the board and with Mr. Shippey to come to a solution. It's very important that many of the uses be maintained, but we agree that there is a substantial amount of material and items that could be removed. So we think, we'd like to propose that the order either be vacated pending further action or stayed pending further action, which I think ultimately would probably include meetings, discussions, things of that sort.
I think the matter stays just the fact that they've appealed your order.
Absolutely.
And I'm not, and I don't think my colleagues are, or they'll tell me if they are, you know, averse to trying to resolve things as amicably, amicably as appropriate and possible. You know, again, we, we need to do a site walk, which means the meeting, you know, this matter's going to have to be continued at least for a month anyhow. So any discussions that could be commenced within that period of time between you and Mr. Shippey and then potentially with our involvement would be appropriate, so.
Okay.
Any other thoughts in that regard?
That's a good way to move forward, I think.
So a site walk attended by Mr. Shippey and the board members?
Yes.
Okay.
Board of Health Director would like to join us as well, because he believes there's no violation, but he would just like to take a look.
I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was an inspection by, I think, the Board of Health and somebody from DEP.
DEP, yeah, he just wants to clarify that.
Okay, right.
Make sure that's all rectified.
Okay.
So what would be convenient? When are you leaving in May?
Well, I will not be here for the May meeting, so if your goal was to, was to vote at the May meeting, I won't be here for that.
Well, we'll see. I mean, my, my goal is that we don't have to vote, that they can
Okay.
Resolve everything and we don't even have a
Okay.
That's my hope. I shouldn't say my goal, that's my hope.
Well, if I can just mention one thing, I concede that that, the structure part, the building, was there. And I talked to Mr. Cook on that. I was like, that probably has pre-existing, nonconforming protection. He assured me that he had documentation. I said, present that to the board when you go for your class three and they can make that determination. It's the part that Attorney Lovely said to the left that I'm more concerned on.
So can I just ask a question? I know we're going to be discussing this further in the side visit, but I just want to see if I understand this. So on the, one of the maps that you've given us, there is a parcel one and a parcel two. So is that building on parcel two? Is it on?
I'd have to see the map. As you, as you're on East Belcher, which highways to your back.
Right.
The building's on the right-hand side as you're looking at it.
Right.
And the vacant parcel is to the left.
So this is one and this is two?
I believe you're right.
So, so we're discussing both of them actually?
The letter was addressed to 24 East Belcher as a single parcel?
As a single parcel, because
They effectively merged.
Exactly, 40A merges them automatically, so.
Okay, so we're discussing one and two?
Yes, which is all one.
So it's all one, okay, just want to understand, thank you.
I was just pointing that out because they were acquired at slightly different times and Mr. Cook's operations at the two parcels began at different times.
Yeah, I think, I believe you bought that second parcel in 2008, 2009?
I think it was eight, when he started to lease in '01, the building parcel.
So to go back, Kim, it's possible that we won't render a decision in May?
Okay.
For two reasons, it's possible it'll come through, you know, resolution and the matter can be withdrawn, and it's possible as well that we'll still be talking in June.
Okay.
So that's why I definitely want to do it at a time that you're able to do it.
Absolutely.
And again, you said going away at the end of May, right?
Yeah, Memorial Day weekend.
Okay. So Jeff, what would be good for you?
I'm generally around until July. Do you have any?
I do have a vacation, like, I don't know the exact dates, but it's
In April?
Yeah.
So maybe if we did, if we did the site walk in early May and then maybe push this off until, for another hearing until June?
On next year?
I think at this point, I'd rather keep it on for May, you know, our next meeting, but let's see where things proceed.
Okay.
Okay. But the first week in May, from my own perspective, Monday and Tuesday, I have meetings in the morning, the rest of the week I'm free.
Wednesday, I could do it in the morning as long as we finish by 11:30 and then I would be free on the third from 2:00 to 3:30?
The third is Wednesday.
The third is what?
The third is Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry, did I say a different, I meant Wednesday, the third.
You meant Thursday.
Sorry, no, May, we're talking, May, Wednesday, May 3rd.
Yeah.
And?
Thursday, May 4th.
Thursday.
Wednesday, May 3rd in the morning.
Thursday, Thursday, the 4th, I could do 10:00 to 12:00, if that works for anyone else.
That works for me, Kurt?
That should be fine.
Lorraine, would the 4th of May, starting at 10 o'clock, be convenient for you?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Scott, that good for you?
I'm putting it in.
You're assuming that that'd be good for Matt?
Yes, I'm assuming.
Okay.
We can, yeah, we can do it.
Okay, so we'll do a site walk, May 4th at 10?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good.
And we'll have a motion to continue it to the 18th.
So moved.
Good. Okay, I'll just have the three of us vote, so Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. And if we seem to be making progress, then we'll continue the matter to
Talk about it then, okay.
So, May 4th at 10 o'clock at your location. Let me just say that I've gotten two, we've received two letters from individuals relative to this matter and I'll read them, or we'll read them into the record when we do continue the matter and we'll also allow for public comment at that point in time.
I would like to talk tonight.
No.
I would like to talk.
We've continued
Why should we waste our time coming here?
Because we
You just say we can't talk.
Because we have not seen the property and I want to wait, I want to give us, I want to give us the opportunity to see the property before having commentary.
He just keeps moving it up to West Street?
I want to assure him that he's not going to move stuff from May down
You'll have to speak with Mr. Shippey, okay? I hate to do that to Mr. Shippey, but you'll have to talk with him.
He's just shifting it up.
All right, we're done.
I do have just one more, if there's special parking instructions, could you just forward that to, you know, say Diana and then she could let us know?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
He won't talk to you. The town council won't talk to you. He wouldn't be responsible for nothing.
Yes.
It's all in state, Bill.
Thank you.
You get this.
All right.
Be sure you want to be in Foxborough.
None of us are here tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I did that to you.
He's going to hold you responsible.
Feel like moving stuff? For what, for moving stuff?
This is like, this is the junkyard on Belcher Street, right?
I'm just going to go shut that door.
Betsy, you have the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, I've actually got two things that want to do relative to Walnut Street. First, we have a, an interim invoice from TEC, which again, was our review consultants. And this invoice covered, I guess, the services from February 1 through February 28. It was in the amount of $5,840. I had hoped that they would be able to get to us in time for tonight their invoice for March, but they apparently haven't been able to do so. Either way, I think they're going to be under the $14,000 that, that we required initially. But I'd like to at least approve the, the interim invoice that, that we've received. So, let me have a motion to do that.
I move that we approve payment, or the applicant's payment of the invoice for $5,940
Uh, $5,840.
Sorry, $5,840 for our consultant.
And Lorraine, I think, because you were voting, you've got to second it? Okay, Kim?
Seconded.
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Okay, so, the second objective is to talk about some of the conditions that we would, we'd like to see, and that was, again, a request that Kim made at the last meeting. The decision, and Betsy, I know you've seen comprehensive permit decisions before, there's a lot of, I don't want to say boilerplate, that's a garbage wording we used in law school, but there's a lot of language that you'll see in every, every comprehensive permit decision. And Judy Barrett, who's our 40B consultant, is working, working on that. When I spoke with her last week, she also asked if we had any specific conditions that we would want to impose in addition to the, the general ones. And, and what I did was came up with a list of 13 that I could think of. And I just want to have a discussion, you know, of those, see if people have any others they want to add, or if there's any, any they want to take away, you know, what have you. But let me first ask you, if, have you had an opportunity to see them?
Yes, we have.
And do you have any adverse reactions to this, to start, or?
No, there are just a couple of things that I think we want to clarify.
Yeah.
So, as we go through them, we mostly just make sure that it's clear of the whole, you know, whole point.
And, and ultimately, you know, when, when I send these off to, to Judy, whatever we agree on, she's going to add a little bit more verbiage to it, I would hope. If I have to edit it, edit it, I will, but, but hopefully that'll clarify. These are more bullet points than they are, you know, full-blown specifications. But why don't you tell us what your questions are, what your concerns are?
We'll go right down. Again, I think it may be addressed when, if someone goes into it. But item number one, Betsy brought up, that she believes that it should state in there that the preference has to say 70% in the permit itself. Not just the maximum extent possible, but specifically say 70%. I'm sure the consultant would have picked that up, but we want to go over that, you know, so that the Foxborough residents have that ability, and it's crystal clear on the decision.
And it may have to be limited only to the initial lease-up, but I'm assuming that Judy will
Yeah.
Know the requirements. I just wouldn't want to have us not get the maximum without it being stated that way.
Yeah, see, the reason I wrote maximum extent was I figured that was 70%, so I would cover it that way.
Sure. No, I agree.
But, okay. Yep? Okay.
And then, item number two, one of our concerns is the wording of other road improvements, which is kind of unknown on our part. But also, one of my concerns is, is if the traffic light gets in there, is it installed and operational?
Mm-hmm.
And let's say it's in the fall, and for whatever reason, it's decided we'll finish the other improvements in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we can't get the occupancy permits because of a decision made by others, even though the light itself is operational and the roadway itself is operational. So, you know, we'd like to have a change to say installation and operational of the traffic signal at that corner. Because I don't think they're going to get that signal going until those roadways are safe to be used with the signal.
Mm-hmm.
And again, the other road improvements are kind of an unknown statement, but also there could be a delay in getting that done for whatever reason, and the winter is, you know, an example that kind of jumped out to me.
Okay. Any concerns about that?
No.
Okay.
I don't think we had anything on three per se. You know, it can just be tightened up a little bit. Item number four, removal of existing trees between location of Building 3 and the abutting properties restricted to those dead and deceased. Again, it's not from the building itself, because you have the building, the roadway, and then you'll have the planting area
Mm-hmm.
For the new trees.
Right.
So, it's really from probably the edge of disturbance where the plantings are going to be.
Do they have a drawing of that, showing where the
Yeah, it's, it's in the, in the, well, in what will be the approved plans, is?
There's a area of clearing.
Let me use that as an exhibit.
So, from that point on, we agree with that.
It's one of the L's. Yeah, right here. Right. So, we can reference it to the page in the approved plans?
Yep.
Okay.
However we want to do it. Also, staying kind of with that, unless I missed it, there's no condition in here with regard to the removal of healthy trees in that buffer area, and also putting in the 25 evergreens that were going to be placed in that area for the benefit of those
Yeah, I, I
Residential buffer.
Yeah, I, I thought of that. The reason I didn't do that was, again, you know, this will be the, the approved plan. Certainly, there'll be a reference to it, and again, there's, there is a page in there that shows where the plantings are going to be. That's the reason I didn't
Okay.
Specify that, but I certainly have no objection to, to specifying it.
Right, because there could be some healthy trees that are going to be removed in order to put the healthy trees in certain areas.
Yeah.
We talked about that. But other than that, no healthy trees are going to be removed. But, you know, we're going to meet with town officials and hopefully the residential neighbors in order to determine where those 25 evergreens are going to be placed, so they have the most impact.
So, what are, what are you suggesting then, Frank?
Something to the fact that the removal of healthy trees in the buffer area between the service road and the property line, it's not anticipated, except when diseased are dying, and then 25 evergreens will be installed closer to the abutting property line for additional screening. Location to be determined in the field with property owners and town officials.
You have something you can, you can send me? And I'll massage it, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
It needs it.
I'm sorry?
I scribbled it down. Yep, I said it needs massaging, but yeah.
Okay. All right.
So, we want to make sure the property owners are there, town officials, for everyone to decide. That kind of dovetails with four. Five and six are fine, seven and eight.
Do you want to clarify the seven who will notify?
So, residential butters?
Mm-hmm.
We want to get your understanding, is it just direct abutters? Is it, you know, the abutters from the abutters list? We thought it would be direct abutters to the property, direct residential abutters to the property, so we're going to have to notify the Commonwealth
Yeah.
If they're in the butter.
Well, what, what I'm thinking in terms of is, you know, the abutters on, on North High, the abutters on, on Walnut. So, we can say residential butters on
Direct abutters. See what I'm saying?
Your, your original abutter list was more than direct abutters, wasn't it?
Yes, it's the typical 300-foot, you know, technically under state law.
Yeah, it's 300 and, yeah.
Well, it's direct abutters.
And butters to a butters.
And a butters, a butters within 300 feet.
300 feet.
But you could be 300 feet, but you're in a butter of an a butter, and you shouldn't be on that list.
Right.
You know, but typically towns just go 300 feet.
Um
And again, we just want to do residential butters, you know.
Yeah, I don't want to notify the, you know, there's no need to notify the Commonwealth, no need to notify
And we'll, we'll do whatever the board wants, we just, you know, want it understanding. And again, not everyone on North or Walnut Street is within
No, I don't want to, you know, you don't need all of Walnut Street.
Do you want to give it some thought?
Yeah. I think it's just more a clarification.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, Lorraine had a question about nine, maybe that
Yeah, I just, I thought it was supposed to be switch locations with the dog park and the putting green, not the pickleball court.
Okay.
And that's our
Is what we had, we had discussed at the last meeting.
That's what I remember as well.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. This is Jonathan from Western Sampson. There's a question about location of the pickleball court, and how close they are to the closest abutters on Walnut and North High. I have that information if you want that. So, the, the one on Walnut Street is 289 feet, and then the closest on North High is 618 feet.
Yeah, I love that. Thank you.
So, the dog park and the putting green are switched?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then I thought in number 10, to include the dog park in those same restrictions so that, again, for noise reasons.
I think the dog park could be used, you know, beyond those. The dog park's going to be behind the buildings, and, you know, we'd like to keep it the way it is, if we could. Because how can you tell a dog to go to the bathroom from eight? Sundown, talking to you.
I'm talking about
Well, I think a dog park is different.
You know, socializing dogs.
Yes, it's socializing dogs, and they can be running around and barking at each other, just taking a walk, obviously, dogs need to go to, I don't know, I don't have a dog, but if they need to walk at 11 o'clock at night, they need to walk at 11 o'clock at night. But sort of letting them loose within a dog park could be noisy at 11 o'clock. So, I would be comfortable leaving at the 8:00 AM. Adding the addition, I agree with Lorraine, the addition of dog park to number 10, and until sundown for the dog park, obviously not restricting the movement of dogs outside of that, around the rest of the property.
Okay.
I, I think in time, your, your residents probably would not want a, a dog park open to midnight or what have you.
Again, no lighting on the pickle and patchy court to the putting green is fine by us, because there's no, you can add the dog park there, because no one's going to be using it, you know, during the night, so.
Yeah.
Now, there're going to be general lights out there
Yeah.
That could splash over, but no lights specifically for those things.
Okay, great. So, adding the dog park into number 11?
Number 11 is fine, too.
Great.
And 12 and 13, we're comfortable with also.
Anything that you can think of in addition?
No.
Kurt?
No.
Lorraine, anything else?
No, thank you.
Scott, do you have anything?
One thing I might like to add is, like, doing a pre-construction meeting with all pertinent department heads, like five departments, myself, land use director, water and sewer, just so that we're all on the same page
Sure.
When you stop breaking ground.
Happy to.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think you brought that up, too, before.
Yeah.
I didn't say that.
It just makes it easier, that way I'm not fielding a million calls, what's happening.
You have any questions, comments? Are we doing okay, as far as you're concerned?
Yes. I'm praying the leaves keep coming on. It's not filling in on the bottom.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll make these changes. Frank, I'll probably give you a call on a couple of the changes, or maybe I'll run it by you before I send it over to
Yep, and I'll email you that language
Yeah.
That we have.
Yeah, you know, what I'd like to do is get it over to Judy early next week. She told me she was starting to work on it, so we will continue to, to contact her in that regard, but she knows when the next meeting is. She knows we're meeting on March 9th, March 9th, May 9th. And she knows we'd like something in advance, you know, to look at, so let's hope
What's your definition of an advance?
Good question.
Not the same day?
Well, if the last one was any
Exactly.
Yeah. But, but again, this should be a little bit easier than the last one.
Yeah, so we'll give at least a few days
Yeah.
In advance, that'd be very helpful.
I mean, if I can get this over to her, say, Monday or Tuesday of next week, you know, I'll, I'll give her a call afterwards, just to see where she is.
That's great. Thank you.
And move it along. I, I know that the letter that I drafted went to DHCD.
Yep.
Because Paige had mentioned she got some comment back that, you know, things were moving along. So, obviously, they've seen it and
Yes. It is moving, so that's the good news.
Okay. Any idea when work on the, on the signal would actually begin?
Oh, I have no idea.
Yeah.
I'm not, I wasn't privy to that information yet.
We were told going out to bid this, I mean, July, maybe?
Going out to bid?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
I know they've done some infrastructure work there already to prepare for it, but other than that, I don't, I don't have a timeline.
Yeah, when I said road improvements, my understanding was it going to be, you know, left turn or right turn lanes, and that's what I was thinking in terms of, yeah.
Four-way lights, they present.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, but, yeah, I think your point is, is well-taken.
Yeah.
That they could have the signal in, you know, before anything else is completed, so
Right. And we also need the sewer line
Yeah.
Down there, too, so
Okay.
And we can't even open without that, so
No, we can.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I don't think we have anything else, do we?
I don't think we do. We already talked about what might possibly be coming in May, so I think that's it.
So, in May, next month, we can figure a meeting date for June.
May meeting's at 4:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, then the May 9th meeting is at 4:30.
Right.
Unless you stay here.
These precincts will have the sign request for May?
I, yeah, 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 no, no. I've been talking to the, to the lawyer.
The cell tower, probably not.
Okay.
His name is Chase Johnson, so he wants to, he knows the deadline is the 27th, so he wants to get it in for that. So, they're just down to the, how many copies and stuff like that.
Okay. All right, what if I motion to adjourn?
They plan to submit on or before April 28th to make the May 18th hearing.
Yeah. Want to make a motion?
I move that we close the meeting.
A second. Lorraine? Yes?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.